You guys ought to be up and getting done something. Sitting out here is not good.
Weekend.
Somebody better get in.
Alright, let's continue the discussion for a minute. We're talking about where are the keys? That's what everybody's interested in, okay? Listen a second. Let's listen for a second. We're all wondering where the keys are at. Earlier the question was asked, what about this breach of security at the building this weekend? Okay? So shall I describe what that was, what happened? So... I'm gonna work on it as best I could. I'm sure I'll have plenty of people to correct me that weren't even here, but you go ahead.
Why doesn't the mayor address it?
Because he doesn't know what I'm about to say. Would you like any answer? Would you like to wait a few days?
No.
Okay, so let's have the answer. So, this morning I arrived at the building at a quarter to eight. Because the building opens at eight. Those that are interested will listen, those that are not will not listen. So thank your neighbor if they talk over you. So, I got here at a quarter to eight. Because we've had a lot of drama and garbage going on in the last few days. And these ladies had almost just shut it down and left. So I was here today. When Gary was here on Thursday, when there was a lot of turmoil going on, he came down to try to keep things calm so the ladies would continue to work. Then he ended up getting escorted out by the sheriff's department. As ordered, Friday, okay? And so today, since when the sheriff escorted Gary out on Friday, he was told not to come back, which means he was trespassed by the sheriff. If Gary came back, he would have been arrested. So I came down this morning to try to make sure things were calm and that the ladies could get their work done. I got here at a quarter till eight. At about five till, a white car pulled up. I later was told that the driver of that car was Mr. Roberts' stepdaughter. I don't know her. She was parked a little further down to the side. And then at nine after, Vicky and Kayla showed up. And I got out of the truck and I started walking this direction. And the lady in the car, just as I got to the car, started to get out as Kayla got out. And then Vicky opened her door to get out. About that point, I was even with the front of the lady's car. And she glanced over and looked at me. And within three seconds, she's back in the car. And she left and she did not return. Now, I entered the building with Vicky and Kayla. And we came inside. And one of the first things that Vicky said was that Davita's door was closed. And that Davita normally doesn't close her door because the building and the office are secure. So then we learned that the internet was not working. And we couldn't process payments. And the girl spent twenty minutes trying to figure out why the internet wasn't working. At around, I'm gonna guess, 8:30, Mr. Roberts showed up. And they informed him that the internet was not working. And about, as they continued to look and try to figure out what was out of place with the system, for about, I don't know, ten, fifteen, maybe twenty minutes, Mr. Roberts then stated he was standing at the counter inside the office and I was outside the counter. And he walked, he said, "Well, maybe something's unplugged." So then he turned immediately and walked straight into Davita's office, which Vicky had opened. And he was in there maybe a minute and he came back out. And coming back out, he said, "Well, that was unplugged." And he walked directly from that point without pass and go, without collecting $200, straight line to the area beneath the counter. And he looked down and said, "Well, that's unplugged too." And he plugged it in and I said, "What?" He said, "The ethernet cable." And I said, "Well, why would anybody unplug that? If you want to protect the computers, you unplug the electricity. Shut it down, unplug it for like a lightning strike or whatever." So then, after another, I don't know, ten minutes of these ladies trying to figure out what was going on, he said that, well, I know what prompted him. They said, "Well, somebody's been in here, who's been in here?" So they ran the software on the alarm system to see who, over the weekend, had access to the building. And they came up with the answer from the email returned and it said that Joni had. And we're like, "What would Joni be doing in the building over the weekend?" So that, at that point, maybe four or five minutes afterwards, then Eric said, "Well, I was the one that unplugged that." He said that Joni had given her keys to Cindy. And that Cindy had given those keys to Eric, along with Joni's security code. And that Eric had come in and unplugged those because they were concerned that perhaps over the weekend that Davita might try to access the computers from home, which I know is possible. I don't know if she knows how, but it is possible for some people to do that. And so that internet was disconnected to prevent the possibility of anybody logging on to the computers and damaging the computer somehow. But that's why we know somebody was in the building. Now, how long does it take to come in, disarm the alarm, go to Davita's office, pull the ethernet cable, come out underneath the counter, pull the ethernet cable, then reset the alarm and leave? Five, six minutes? Do you know what you're doing? The person that came in was in the building twelve to fourteen minutes? So now we're having trouble finding the keys. I don't know what anybody did. And with the disabling of the cameras, there was apparently no video of whatever was done when that person entered. But at the moment, we don't seem to know where the keys are. And there was some unauthorized or questionable activity over the weekend. And that's where we're at at the moment. I'm not making any accusations. I'm telling you what I know about the disabling of the alarms and somebody being present unescorted in the building for twelve to fourteen minutes before they were turned back on.
So are you now telling us that you're not gonna be able to have the votes?
Do you know where the keys are? Because I don't.
I'm asking you a question.
I'm listening.
Don't interrupt me.
I'm listening.
Are you now telling us that the vote, the election votes are not gonna be able to be canvassed? Is that what you're telling us?
I don't know the answer to that. I know we want to find the keys and we want to be able to finish that vote.
What?
You can always have a lock, as long as it's an official election judge. They'll guess, I'm not worried about that.
It's not that we can't access them. But it needs to be done with witnesses, especially if we're gonna do it without keys. Okay? We need to have it done properly. It needs to be open. So we need to have other people there to witness and even videotape when and how it's opened, that it's properly secured before they mess with it, etc.
How are you guys gonna make us aware when the canvassing is gonna be done?
What is your suggestion? One moment, sir, we'll get your question, ma'am.
Put it on the website.
Yeah, we could probably take a really good quality video while we're doing it. Do we want, we need to come down? We can't have a crowd of eighty people, but we should be able to make room for two or three or four to see it?
Yes.
Okay?
What are you guys gonna do about the immediate problem right now?
I'm sorry?
The sheriff's been told. What are you gonna do about the immediate problem right now? How are we gonna handle that right now?
There's no keys to get them.
What are you gonna do?
Have him take the box.
Scarlett said the box is key all these buildings.
So what are you gonna do? Who's gonna sit here all night with them?
If somebody did sit here all night with them, who's gonna trust them? You could pick anyone in this town and say, "That person's gonna sit with them all night." And somebody here's gonna say, "You can't trust him."
Well, I can't trust you, sir. You can't trust anybody who's sitting there.
I really think I could trust you, but do you have a suggestion on something that's gonna satisfy them?
I don't know. You guys have got a problem, you've got to come up with an answer. In this meeting, you can go no farther until this is taken care of.
I'm asking for suggestions, sir, do you have one?
I don't have any. I don't have any authority to do anything here.
Well, you don't even have authority if you have suggestions.
I want somebody on this council to come up with something that we can do about this. Why is there no keys?
They have to sit at the mic so they can hear you in the back.
Why is there no keys right now? We don't know.
Yeah, we actually don't know why right now.
Okay, so you've got a box, Harris, lockdowns.
Yeah, should be done.
Okay. So I would be making every effort I could to find those keys. Who had access to the keys last?
My fault would be the last person that had access. Possibly maybe the person that came in the building Saturday night. But I don't know that, I don't know what he was doing.
You mean the keys were available Saturday night?
Well, I don't know what the person did when he was in the building. Maybe he did nothing but unplug some things and leave. I don't know.
No security at all?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When did you know that the keys weren't there?
Couple of minutes ago when they went to look at what for them, where Davita left them. Because we didn't know where they were before, only Davita knew where they were. So I didn't know that we didn't know where they were until we just went looking.
Can we still not canvass the vote?
Well, you have to have, the issue's not the canvassing of the vote. The issue is how do you secure that until the person that's gonna do the canvas gets here?
Well, I thought whoever canvassed the vote had to be called by the clerk.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, there will be an appointment made when he's available. I'm assuming that's gonna be in the morning.
Why does it have to begin and we have to wait five more days? When we can get somebody?
What did he say about Davita?
He's gonna be in tomorrow. Back in town, has he called him? Then I'm assuming he can probably make time online, stay a person.
Save it to you.
He does not work.
And he is small business, sir, not small business, sir. He owns a very good type business in town.
Still, Nipples was our county clerk for thirty-five years.
Everybody asked, my wife said, "Who do we know that's totally, totally impartial?"
I'm just asking a question. Why do we have to wait five days?
Because my boss's father had his memorial service waiting this weekend. So.
So if he's not able to do it, we can get it from somewhere.
If you guys want somebody who is totally impartial, you have to wait three days.
You're pretty aggressive for somebody standing in my face.
Because I want everybody to get it, I want to stop.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm not in your face, ma'am.
I'm not kidding on your wife.
I'm not, because you're not. But I had a gentleman back there screaming at my wife today.
I, what, I was?
I, okay. We can find somebody else because if this is the way. I can, I can, just tell my boss, the lawyer, that.
I didn't ask, I didn't say that.
Hey, whatever.
I am asking a question.
I'm not being aggressive and. I made a suggestion for this town. Not for anybody else.
I'm simply asking a question.
I thought you guys would appreciate it, but I'll call now and tell them.
The reason why I chose the gentleman was because he doesn't have ties to this town. So he isn't gonna be swayed by the townspeople.
Anybody with any integrity for the election is not gonna be swayed.
Bonnie?
Yes.
I'm not trying to get involved in this whole fight, but the reason there's five days so far that have passed is because the immediate night after, when there was confusion, no, no, the clerk was removed.
You're right.
So she was the one that would have had to do that.
Right.
So the same reason that some of the people almost didn't get their paychecks, the same reason we almost didn't get our water shares purchased, it's all because of purpose on. But what she's saying is they expect it tomorrow or the next day.
Yeah, I was just asked, I was putting this position.
Yeah, earlier, when I asked, you had made it sound like it was gonna be five more days.
No, no, no. It would be this Wednesday or Thursday, I'm pretty sure.
In the next day or two.
Yes.
So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, everybody back there understood.
Can we, we want boxes that have the balance?
No, no. And just so you know, I'm not aware of anyone.
Whatever else.
Up here, I'm only here for social media.
We need to lock it in your vault.
But I can tell you, I'm not aware of anybody. For myself, that I'm trying to challenge the election itself. I think we all think that the election is fair. There might have been electioneering issues, might have been other things. We call it election fraud, there's different. But the electioneering may have occurred, I don't know. But that's a separate issue.
Yeah, it seems like that's the, we just need to get the election certified.
And if it's certified, it's fine. I would be, my hope that the new incoming council would actually work with the people that are already here and say, "How can we move forward?" Because they need to elect somebody to, and file with the bank. And they need to say, "Okay, these are gonna be your signatures. These are people that you can get paid, paid done. These are people that are never, all this stuff." That's all the stuff that could have happened. Regardless of why, it doesn't really matter. At this point, I'm hoping they can work together.
And that's my concern. I'm not concerned about five.
But I don't think anybody's, the election's not gonna change. I am very doubtful.
Yeah, I'm concerned about when it's gonna be.
And I think the five day confusion was because it's been five days from the election. It's not because it's, so I hope that answers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Bonnie had asked a question. I just tried to answer it. So I think there's been some confusion and I was trying to address the confusion. She had asked about five days and she seemed to be under the pressure it was gonna be five days before we could get somebody out. First of all, I'm not sure, I'm not aware of anybody that's challenging the election itself. I think that the election, the results are what they are. People voted, that's their decision. I have no problem with that. I'm here today because I was asked to be here so that we could continue with the business. I thought my last day was a week ago. That being said, they are in contact with someone to do the election. They believe that he will be able to do it perhaps as early as Wednesday. It's not five more days. It's just five days have already passed since the election. You only have fifteen days to cure or secure the vote, or to canvass. So I wanted to make sure that you understand that. As far as election fraud, I'm not aware of anybody that's claiming election fraud. There might be those who have misunderstood because electioneering and election fraud are not the same thing. So it can be up to one year in prison from what I understand, a thousand dollars per occurrence if you tell people how to vote or you hand information, that kind of stuff. That being said, that's not fraud. Now, if the secretary of state is not going to handle this, they do not do local elections. And you can call the elections department yourself, secretary of state. So they'll say, "No, you can talk to DOLA." Really what's gonna happen most likely is if anybody wants to press charges, it'll have to be brought up to the DA. If the DA chooses not to actively participate, it is my understanding, and I've only done it once in my life, but anyone can ask for a grand jury to be convinced if the DA doesn't wanna do his job. So that being said, you could call a grand jury and let, you know, those individuals that are totally outside of the system make those decisions. But nobody is challenging the election, to the best of my knowledge, Cody. You were properly elected, others were properly elected. No one's gonna say that that election's not valid. What they're, what they're saying is that it has to be cured. And so that is by state statute and it has to be done within fifteen days. The reason it wasn't started immediately is because the person that we assumed was going to talk to the new council and say, "Hey, this is the next step." She was relieved before she had that opportunity to say that. Like her or don't like her, that's up to the new council. That being said, that's the person that was, would normally, because she was the clerk, that would have said, "Okay, now we have to get this process cured." In addition, that's the same person that runs payroll, as you found out the other day. So to the people to get paid, things like that. So whoever you have in the future, those are the individuals that you, hopefully, as a council will trust. It would be my hope that this incoming council can work with some members of the old council and whoever to say, "How can we have a peaceful transference?" I'm here because I was told to be here tonight. I'm not trying to get involved in everybody's business. But there are certain rules that they have to be. I think there's been some confusion and hopefully you guys can, the new council can work through that. And hopefully do what's best for this community. As far as the keys, I have no idea what's going on. I've never had a key to the building. I've never asked for the code, so I never wanted it. But one of some things the new council's gonna have to deal with is you're gonna have to choose, Cody, you're gonna have to choose, the new council's gonna have to choose two people at least that can go and sign checks, two people to be on the bank. People to be the ones that can go and change, go into the security box and that kind of stuff. So that's all things, just regular bookkeeping things that the new council will have to do. So I hope that clarifies what you're asking. I don't know who this gentleman is, so I don't know. Um, I don't know what he is, sorry.
Can you still outrun the people who walk in the office? That's why we have suspected of missing keys.
I just wanted to try to clarify. So no one's saying it's gonna be five more days?
Well, that's fine, but why wasn't this clarified that we had to wait April 15th today that you all got up out your seats and walked away? Why, I don't understand.
Okay, and I'm sorry that happened. I was not aware, and I've been a state legislator. Nobody in this room knows all the state statutes, I guarantee you. And even the new council came in and took an oath to uphold not just the federal constitution, but the state constitution, which is much longer than the federal constitution. I doubt that most people have read through it. I'm probably the only person in the room that has, because I was a legislator. So just realize that sometimes bad things happen, mistakes happen. I'm hoping the two councils and the ones that are rolling over can help smooth things over if you're willing to work together.
The new council just wants to get over this fiasco and do what's right for the town.
And I hope you guys can do that. As far as your monies that weren't on the payroll or whatever, or somebody saying there was eight hundred dollars off, I don't know. I can tell you, the reason, only reason I offered to come on when I was asked is to help balance the budget. You have a balanced budget if you know where the monies are coming to and going from. It is, the money is there for those processes. But we had to cut over half a million dollars to make that happen, to balance the budget. And this is the first time we've had a balanced budget, in my understanding, first time we've had one turned into the state in quite a few years. And it's the actual balanced budget, it's not a wish list. It's money in, money out. If you can't tell us where the monies come in, we said we can't count that. And previous councils had used wish lists, to be honest. They said, "This is how much we want to spend, so this is what we're gonna say." The current budget was zero balanced. And so that means that if they couldn't show the money coming in, they can't show the money going out. And that's why we had to make so many cuts. I hope that answered your questions.
Okay, I just have a suggestion. Be simple minded, but there was talk about closing the office for so many days. Okay, so get a list of the people that you owe. Write them a letter, say we're under, we're having problems, something. We're having, you know, town council problems or whatever. I don't know what you would say.
How you phrase it, sure.
As soon as our council is back to where it needs to be, you will be paid. As far as the boxes, hire a locksmith to come in and open them. Make new keys for them.
So I'm sure that when you have an election judge come in, he can just cut them. Use a bolt cutter, I'm pretty confident.
Are they?
I'm confident, I have not seen, but the boxes that were used for the election, I can tell you, you can use a bolt cutter. I mean, you're not gonna have a lock bigger than that, that you can't just cut it and do that.
I wasn't sure what kind of lock it was.
So I'm not sure what happened to the keys and stuff. I don't have a key to the building, I've never been in charge of this.
No, I don't want it.
So, thank you.
And if payments are being entered, I could assist in entering payments to get money in the bank so it's not sitting down here in an office that possibly people are coming and going out of.
The payments have been entered. We just need to get them verified and put on a deposit for the bank. That's where I'm running into the problem. So they've all been applied.
Donnie used to, years ago, and she worked in the cell, so I think she'd be probably knowledgeable.
So it seems within a day or so, the person's gonna be here to canvass the vote. The issue is how do we secure the ballots and secure all of that before that person arrives? And that's a valid issue and we need to protect that. Apparently, when the locks were set up for this building, and I've learned this about five minutes ago, the keys that opened the door to the DVR and the keys that opened the safe vault door, whatever you wanna call that, where all the records and the receipts are kept, are the same keys that unlock the doors and every door in this stinking building. And so the only way to secure that would be to put all the ballots and stuff in that vault and lock that. And then secure the whole building and give every set of keys that has the key to that door to him.
Here's mine.
And listen, and close this building until time to do that canvass. And you would hold those keys, Mr. Mayor, at your home, only person that has them. And then when the guy comes to canvass, then we get the canvassing done and then the problem is secured.
I would like to be here while it's canvassing.
I would like you to be here when it's canvassing. Candidates can't be witnessed, okay? Can't be witnessed, can they be videotaped? Can the videotape be done? Can it be videotaped?
Probably not if you're not allowed to witness it.
Between now and then, can we ask Karen, because she's the ultimate authority, if we could have somebody videotape that since you can't have witnesses standing?
If she's gonna still, even if you can't really close the office, if you're expecting her to actually go forth and make those calls and make sure that the election judge is here. You know, can't we?
There's no perfect answer. Yes, sir.
You could stream, maybe livestream, I don't know. Maybe livestream the inside of the building for the next two or three days right on the internet and say, "Here, there you are." That way you know who's in the building. And anybody that wants to watch for the next two days that doesn't have anything else to do with their life, they can watch.
Well, I wish that that would work, but the stuff that was disconnected this morning has disabled the camera system within the building. It's not currently videoing, it's not currently working.
Can I explain why I did what I did?
You can explain if you like. We still don't know what all went on, but that's fine. Would you like to come forward and take the microphone and explain what you did and why? Because I know that you did explain that to us this morning. Where's the other microphone? Okay, good. Please, sir, go ahead.
Okay. I had a direct order from the elected mayor that was sworn in the other night to come into the building and disconnect the ethernet cables to all the computers and to the DVR.
And that's what you told us this morning?
And that's what I did, exactly what I did. Okay, while I was in the building, Mr. Jay Kohler come in this morning with a court request for the videos on the cameras. Okay?
He did.
How did he know, how did he know that I was in this building on Saturday if he don't have access to the cameras?
The way that we got the name, the name we got was Joni, and then you came forward.
Joni's code come up when I punched her code in to get in the office. Now, how does, now, just let me speak, shut your mouth, I'm talking here. How did Jay have access to them cameras to turn around to know that I and Scott was in here on Saturday afternoon?
Was Scott with you?
He sure was.
Okay.
Okay? What difference does that make? Scott, Joe Blow from Idaho, it don't make no difference.
It's the first time we heard that he was with you.
Well, it don't make no difference who was with me. He was in here with me for a witness that I was in here.
Probably a good idea.
Okay, well, how does Jay have access to, why does Jay have access to these cameras when he couldn't even have it?
I don't know that he does.
Well, he turned around and gave the thumb drive to the cops this morning, saying that he had me on video in the town hall. Where'd he come up with that? If he don't have access to these cameras, how did he get that video?
My understanding, what he showed the cops this morning was when you snatched the body camera off his chest.
He went home and got a thumb drive.
My understanding is he went home and transferred from the camera to the thumb drive.
He went home and got the thumb drive to give to the sheriff's office because he was accusing me of being in this office on Saturday. Now, how did he know I was in here roaming around in the cameras and in the building if he didn't have access to the cameras?
I don't know, I didn't hear him say that.
Well, you don't know. And I do know he does have access, I bet my life on it.
Well, what I know and what I saw was when you snatched that camera off his chest.
Well, you don't know what took place on Saturday either, do you? Because you wasn't here.
You're right, I wasn't.
Okay, I rest my case.
Thank you.
Good, uh, since we're gonna leave the keys with the mayor, we should also leave passwords, correct? Passwords to anything in here, right?
Whatever you have, because the alarms will go off.
No, I don't have nothing, but I'm just saying, what Davita has access to, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a password for this building either, or a key, never have. But the best solution I could come up with is take every single key that opens this building and give them to him and close this building until the person is there to do the canvass.
Nobody, I'm sorry, Vicky.
No, I get it.
No, nobody.
He's only offered to turn in their keys.
Yeah, I was actually the one that came up with that idea.
Vicki's fine with giving her keys.
I don't mind turning them over at all.
Vicki's fine with giving her keys. Well, Eric needs to turn in the keys, everybody's got keys to this building.
Since it's a decision, she, she, she should have to be paid during the time long.
Does anybody have a better solution than taking all the keys and open this building and letting him hold them until the person is ready to come canvass? Does anybody have a better answer than that?
Cindy?
Cindy?
John's gonna hold the keys, you good with that? The old buddy's gonna be in the office.
John, all the keys that would open this building, John, do you give that?
He has my set.
There's a bunch, everybody's gonna give them up.
To be on the safe side, you can also shut out all the alarm codes except.
Okay, inventory of the keys you have responded to, please. Vicki, could you do that for us, please?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Inventory of the keys, that I gave up the keys.
Make a list of who turned in their keys.
Okay, Cody?
Okay, so, so.
Vicki is.
Right now. So Cody's turned in his keys.
Right, Cody's keys are turned in, who else has keys?
Eric does.
Eric's got the keys, I took Eric's keys.
Those are Cody's, those are Vicki's. Eric, you wanna bring yours up?
No, I took his keys, those are his, those are mine now.
Oh, those are the ones that Eric had that were from Joni.
Oh, those are the ones that were Eric's, okay.
Thank you.
Now, what about the password book for everything on the computers?
Is there a password book, book of passwords for security system?
From my recollection, it is in the office, she never takes it home with her.
Hello?
I don't know where it is.
We're trying to get the answer to your question, if you would allow us to be able to actually hear each other, it would be helpful.
Can you hear her in the high so we can hear what she's saying?
It should be in the office, DeVita never takes her password book there. I've looked for it, but again, she's a treasurer, so she doesn't leave it open for people to be able to grab, so.
Can she not talk? Can she not speak for herself?
Um, right now, she has been dismissed, she hasn't been brought back on yet. We have to get through public comment to, to make her, so that she can be able to speak again if that's something that happens.
We still need hers?
Cause we're still in public comment.
Cindy, can we get your keys, please?
Cindy doesn't have keys either.
I gave her the keys of DeVita's.
Cindy, you have keys to the town hall? They're saying they.
I believe that's true.
Okay, DeVita is the only one that has access to do any changes or anything to that system.
That is also true, I believe.
Okay. Say what?
You used to.
Yeah, because I had to set up.
Irrelevant.
So how come you have access to the cameras?
I have no cameras.
Well, how do you know?
I didn't get the cop on this one, I today.
You can delete that, two years ago I helped take it on his phone, but I have never once logged into your system. Eh, bird, an IP address check will prove that.
Your IP address checked, though, me not. How did you know I was in the office Saturday afternoon?
You said you had it on a thumb drive, you gave it to the cops.
No, I had it assaulted.
So why did you have to? Why did you have to go home and get the thumb drive when you had your body cam right here on you in the office?
Because I wanted a copy for myself, so I sent it to the Secretary of State, Governor, and several other authorities.
Okay, whatever.
Nah, whatever, it happened, bro.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't a resident for it.
Okay, I was.
It's all, it's all you know, it was a harassment charge that I got. You can go and talk all the shit you want.
I will have restraining order hearing tomorrow. You can tell when you're supposed to be in public comment, and we're gonna move on to the agenda.
Okay, we're, we're going to move on, we're gonna turn the, the agenda for, uh, public comment, and we're gonna move on. So it's closed.
Okay, the next one is invocation of dismissed votes. Convocation, sorry, I don't read people's lips. I don't, I don't read my own script.
It's, it's fine, it's fine. You want that, Gary?
Yeah.
Gary's gonna do it.
So we're moving on to the clerk. Um, the board elect did not have the authority to remove her. So therefore she is still in charge. Now, obviously, we had some issues with keys and such going on. Anybody else got opinions on it here, cause?
I'm only seeing two sets of keys. I'm assuming that there's more than, than that out there. I've never had a key.
Are we all just, was leaving the office closed until we have the voter?
I, I think, I think that would be the best to, to leave the office closed, leave the people on pay, pay, just post a letter on the door tonight that says the office will be closed until after the canvassing has finished. And, and then that way, there's no question as, as to what's going on. We're trying to be fair to, to everybody, and make sure that it's, you know, there's no interesting issues.
I agree with you.
You realize that with it closed down, they're not gonna have route sheets, right? Just saying.
Route sheets.
Oh, route sheets.
Yeah, they can pull the old, um, stay pretty close.
And, and that's, that's fine.
Are you suggesting that they open the office when the canvasser becomes available?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
I just wanna make sure.
So what, what he has suggested is that the office remains closed until time at which the can, uh, the election judge come, come in and the canvas can be done. So that way there'll be nobody in, nobody out. Um, if you wanna sit out in your car and watch the building, you can. If you wanna come in and request, do a core request to see whatever video we have or don't have, because right now it's been unhooked, um, that's up to you. But he's, he's suggesting that we were, keep the office closed, that tonight, when you, everybody walks out and John locks the door and sets the alarm, nobody steps back into this office until the election, the election judge that's been hired is here to do the canvassing. So we would just be closed for a couple days, um, and then everybody could know that there was nobody in or out. John will have the only sets of keys that we're aware of.
So he will open the door for the canvasser?
Yes, John, John will be here for the canvasser once the canvasser has been secured.
What are we gonna do about the trash?
Uh, they, they can use their old, uh, list and go from that.
Are your key guys able to run routes?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, they should have the old route sheet, they keep copies of it.
Okay, what was next? So next is voter fraud.
Will the back door be locked too?
Everything, everything should be secured, and the alarm should be set.
Every door will be.